Good evening and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, July 17th, 2023. The meeting will be televised as usual on Miami Valley Cable Council Cable Channel Six and streamed live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. I would like to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission to please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer, independent body appointed by the City Council, whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All actions by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. I'd like to start by introducing the members of the Planning Commission. To your extreme right is Ken Lackey, our Assistant Secretary. Next is Carol Fisher, our Secretary. She's followed by Connie Gah, our Recording Secretary. I'm Ray Waskey, the Chairman. Next is Don Rethman, the Vice Chairman. And finally, I'd like to welcome our newest member of the Planning Commission, Mr. Troy Urbis, who is joining us for his first meeting. Troy, I'd like to ask if you would like to take a minute or so of your time to tell us a little bit about your background and what led you to apply for the Planning Commission?
Thank you. First of all, I'm excited to be here today to be part of the Planning Commission. Something I've been eager to do over the last couple of decades. Been a lifelong resident of Kettering, lived out of the area for a few years, came back and went to Fairmont East High School here, and then also have a Bachelor's in Science degree in Civil Engineering from the University of Cincinnati. So I hope some of that and my experiences in the world will be able to provide additional value to the Planning Commission. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here today.
Great, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. And I'd like to also introduce members of our city staff. Tonight, we have Ryan Holmesy, City Planner and Zoning Administrator. Who is, there he is. So starting with our agenda, under Old Business, the first item is on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes of the commission's meeting of June 5th, 2023. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the commission's meeting of June 5th?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of June 5th, 2023. Mrs. Gah, please call the roll.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Epstein.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. The minutes have been approved. The second item on the agenda is a request for a conditional use approval for the construction of an ancillary, or rather accessory, storage building at 2100 East Stroop Road, planning case number 23-010. This is a continuation of a public hearing from the June 25th meeting. And we'll start with staff's presentation. Mr. Holmesy?
Thank you, Chairman. As you'll recall, at the last meeting, this is case PC-23-010, we had received an application from the agent of the owner of 2100 East Stroop to construct a storage building kind of in the southeast corner of their property at the corner of Woodman and East Stroop to be used as storage as a part of their funeral home operation there, that's Route Salon Funeral Home. This map kind of shows the general location where that building was proposed. And at the meeting, there was some additional information introduced by the business owner involving a potential expansion of the parking lot, a potential, here's that original plan that we got, just shows that blue outline there is the new drive aisle that would connect to the building. The red outline is the enclosed storage portion of the building, and then the kind of orange areas are carports that would be on either side. And that was the original site plan that we got as a part of the initial application. Before the meeting, we knew that there was interest in possibly shifting that building further to the east, kind of roughly outlined there. And then at the meeting, we discovered that there was interest in adding some parking and also shifting the building that we already knew about. Based on the testimony delivered at the meeting, it was determined that the application that we got and that we gave legal notice for was for the storage building and the drive aisle. It didn't include any expansion of parking, so there was some unknowns that we wanted to get more information about from the applicant before making a decision. So that decision was made to continue the meeting to tonight. And between that last meeting and tonight, about two weeks ago, we received the map, it's really just a concept plan. You can see the white outline here is the building outline. You can see the proposed parking area. Kind of this dashed line here is a retention, or not retention, a detention area, which would be a dry basin from what we understand. And this, this blue outline here, kind of the area that's more blue, that's the hundred year flood plan that we talked about a fair amount at the last meeting. The changes that you'll notice based on this concept plan is the structure moved to the east and would sit about 10 feet from this property line here. And this red line here depicts a residential lot line, and per the zoning standards that we have, it needs to be 35 feet from that property line. This shows about a 10 and a half foot setback from that lot line. And then the south, the property to the south also outlined in red here is another residential property that the building would have to be 35 feet from, and this plan shows about a 32-foot setback. We understand it's conceptual, but this introduced a little bit more uncertainty in what the ultimate plan was. And also that footprint of the building relative, increases the building size to about 6,800 square feet, which the last one, including the carports, was about 4,800 square feet. So we had the comments that are shown here. We sent those off to the applicant and we, and the business owner, we had not gotten a response. So the staff recommendation, and I can answer any questions you might have, and we did forward these comments to the applicant, is that the case be continued to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which is August 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers at 3,600 Troy Road, Kettering, Ohio, 45429. And on the memo that was sent out as a part of your packet, staff included a comment that this plan has enough changes to it with the parking and potentially bigger building that we would have to re-advertise to the neighbors and in the newspapers, so they'd have to reapply because this plan is different than what we advertised before. So the continuation is if they want to go back to a plan that's closer to this, it gives them the opportunity to do that, but if they decide they want to pursue a plan like this, they'd have to reapply, and we'd have to advertise again. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's kind of a unique one, but...
Does anyone on the commission have a question for Mr. Holmesy? I had, just for clarity, if you could back up one slide, the, yes, that one. So the, is the structure currently as designated, is that within or closer to the lot line, closer than 35 feet to the lot line, or is it, or is it not?
It is. It's hard to see, but on the south side, it's about a little more than 32 feet away. From the east side, it's about 10 and a half feet away. The one point of clarity for that house, kind of to the northeast of the proposed building, that is owned by, it's on a separate lot, but it's owned by the church, and at the last, I can't think of the name of the church, to the east, if they were to come in and replat their property and kind of consolidate all the lots into one, similar to what the funeral home did when they consolidated and added the houses to the lot that contained their main funeral home, then the building could be within 10 feet of that eastern lot line because the house will become accessory to the church.
Okay.
But to the south, it has to be 35 feet away regardless because there's just a house down there, and also there's that flood plain there that you can grade and do landscaping work in the flood plain, but there's, it's a little trickier to do from an engineering perspective. So one of our comments is that this plan does not leave much space to install buffering without affecting the flood plain.
Right.
Which again, you can grade in the flood plain, you can do work, but it's not as simple as doing it out of the flood plain. Because the last plan, if I remember correctly, was, I think that southern side of the property was, it was at least 35 feet away, it might have been a little bit more, camera off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
And I believe the public hearing, before you, sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
Go ahead.
The public hearing is still open from the last meeting, and I believe there is, I don't know if he wants to speak, I believe there is someone here related, related to the case. Did he want to say anything?
Actually, I was going to ask if anyone is here that wishes to address the commission, since this is an open public hearing, please come forward. Please give your name and address for the record.
Gary Lepa, 2100 South Patterson Boulevard, Kettering.
Thank you.
I'm the attorney for Mrs. Gressner, who's the south property. She was at the last hearing, and I just, all I can say is I echo her comment, what's the plan? What's the ultimate plan? What's that going to look like? And then she'll have some comments, and maybe I will be back for that purpose, but it was easy for me to stop in tonight and just keep tabs on where we are. It seems to me if they have to re-advertise, I'm not sure how anything goes forward August 7th as a continuation of the old hearing because it would be a new one, but I'm sorry. But I'll pay attention, I'll stay tuned and see what happens next. I appreciate your patience with this.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Seeing no one else, staff recommendations?
Thank you, Chairman. The recommendation by staff, and I can clarify this slightly before I get into it, what Mr. Lepa said is correct. If they end up reapplying and we have to re-advertise, it won't be able to be on the August 7th meeting. We normally ask for applications, a minimum of, a complete application, a minimum of three weeks before the meeting, so it'd be very tight schedule to make that work. So most likely it'd be the second meeting in August if they change the plan, kind of similar to what's shown here. If they decide to just go back to what they originally applied for, then the reason we're recommending it be continued is that it would give them the ability to come forward at the next meeting with their former plan.
Okay. Mr. Rethman?
Question. So if they do decide to go forward with a new plan, would that then get a new case number? So if we continue this old case number to the next meeting, would if they're expanding the parking and the building and it's re-advertised, would that no longer be PC-23-010?
If it's a new application, it would get a, probably, I believe it would get a new case number.
I guess I'm just considering in terms of whatever motion we do here, if we say we're going to just continue this case, I mean, that's basically with the old information. If it's going to be something new, it's a new item, so...
They'll withdraw.
Right.
They would withdraw the subject.
We would withdraw, yeah, they would withdraw the old application and then...
I'll just continue this one. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So the staff recommendation, sorry, I keep going out of turn here. The staff recommendation is that the case be continued to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which is August 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers at 3,600 Troy Road, Kettering, Ohio, 45429.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Holmesy. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Rethman has a motion?
I do, Mr. Chair. I have a motion to continue the public hearing for PC-23-010 to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is August 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers, City of Kettering. And yeah, we'll leave the public hearing open. That concludes my motion.
And we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey and Mr. Rethman. Mrs. Gah, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. So the motion is passed to continue the public hearing until August 7th. Turning now to New Business, the third item on our agenda is a request for rezoning of properties at 2225 and 2235 Wilmington Pike from the R1 Suburban Residence, BP Business Park, and R4 Residential Districts to R4 Residential, planning case 23-014. This will also be a public hearing. We'll begin with staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. This is an item that I believe has been before the, this particular property in rezoning has been before the board, I believe, three times since 2013.
Yep.
If I remember correctly, two of those requests were to zone, rezone the property from the current zoning designations to the B Business District, and then also, the last one, I believe, was to rezone it to the Office District. And in all instances, the Planning Commission recommendation with the support of staff was that the request be denied because it did not comply with the standards of the Kettering Zoning Code that relate to rezoning requests. So the property is kind of on, is on the screen now, outlined in orange there. It's comprised of six different parcels. Collectively, they add up to about .85 acres or about 37,000 square feet. It's just south, kind of southeast of the El Rancho Grande Restaurant, which is shown here, and kind of southwest of the Woodman Wilmington Split. Currently, the property has three different zoning designations. Most of it is already zoned R4, that's this kind of olive green color here. There's a little triangular piece that's zoned BP or Business Park, and that's our industrial district. And then there's a little sliver kind of to the southeast that's zoned R1. And the request involves taking all of those parcels and rezoning them just to the R4 zoning district, which is our multifamily district here in the city. As laid out in the report that went out with the Planning Commission Packet last week, the Planning Commission reviews the review criteria contained in section, excuse me, 1153 dot 12 dot 6 dot A of the Kettering Zoning Code. And there are five different criteria that are reviewed, and no map amendment shall be recommended for approval prior to a specific and documented finding of at least one of the following. The first one is that the proposed amendment is consistent with the City of Kettering Comprehensive Plan and with the intent of the zoning code or such consistency as being sought concurrently. There are several plans that have looked at the Wilmington Corridor in general and also the subject property in particular. The first one is our comprehensive plan, which show, includes a future land use, land use map, which is shown on the screen now. In that land use map, the area is shown as being subregional commercial, which includes recommended uses such as retail, office, residential, and civic uses that are larger in scale and serve the entire community. It's kind of hard to see, but I included this in your packet. However, the comprehensive plan further refines its description of this property upon the redevelopment area concepts, which is, was included as a part of Attachment D with the packet, also shown on the screen now. This map depicts the subject location as being higher dense, as a higher density residential area. And the comprehensive plan further provides, then provides even more details for this specific area within the recommendations section of LU32, which is on the screen now. In that area, particular to the Wilmington Pike Corridor, these recommendations reveal that commercial uses should be concentrated at the two specific intersections of Wilmington and Dorothy and Wilmington at Stroop. And the final recommendation, which is on the screen now, directs the city to locate higher density residential development south of the Woodman Pike and Wilmington Split. So the property is currently, is largely zoned R4 today in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and the rezoning being sought tonight would further bring the property into compliance with the comprehensive plan, so this finding can be made. Criteria number two, there has been a change in demand for land that alters the information upon which the official zoning map is based off of as a result of a change in population, consumer preference, economic indicators, or other socio-economic trends. Number two, a significant change in area or neighborhood condition, building conditions or traffic volumes, or a major change such as the construction of a major road, the installation of a utility line, or other similar factors that significantly alters the area. There's been no such change in demand that alters the information upon which the official map is based, so this finding is not applicable, cannot be made. Criteria two, a study commissioned or conducted by city staff indicates that there has been an increase in demand for land in the requested zoning classification, and as a result, the supply of land within the City of Kettering mapped as such on the official zoning map or official development pattern map is inadequate to meet the demands for such a development. The city did commission a study in 2014 to examine the market conditions of the Wilmington Pike Corridor. That study recommends a reduction of commercially zoned property along the corridor in an effort to bolster the Stroop and Dorothy, the Stroop slash Wilmington intersection and the Dorothy Lane slash Stroop, or I'm sorry, the Dorothy Lane slash Wilmington commercial nodes. And the study finds that there has been a decrease in demand for land in commercial zoning classifications, and the requested zoning is in, is keeping in line with this study by not expanding commercial zoning along the Wilmington Corridor, but is also not reducing commercial zoning, so this is not applicable to this request either. Criteria four, the proposed use cannot be accommodated by sites already zoned in the city due to a lack of transportation or utility, or utilities, or other similar development constraints, or the market to be served by the proposed use cannot be efficiently served by the geographic location of the existing zoning districts. This criteria is also not applicable to the subject request. Most of the subject property is already zoned R4, so while the R4 District is technically being expanded along the Wilmington Corridor, the impact of such an expansion will be minimal and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then finally, there is an error in the zoning code text or official zoning map or the official development pattern district map as enacted. No such error exists. The zoning map was found to be without error at this location. So that is not applicable. And then on top of the previous five criteria, in section 1153 dot 12 dot 6 dot B of the Kettering Zoning Code, the Planning Commission shall consider each of the following matters based on the evidence presented to it when reviewing rezoning applications. Issue one is the extent to which proposed, the proposed amendment and proposed use are in compliance with and deviate from adopted plans, goals, and policies. As noted within the analysis of the prior section of the zoning code, the proposed amendment is compliant with Kettering's comprehensive plan and other applicable studies along the Wilmington Pike Corridor, including the Wilmington Pike Improvement Plan. Issue number two, the suitability of the property in question for the uses permitted under the proposed zoning. The proposed, the subject property's location within the middle of the Wilmington Pike and Woodman Drive intersection will result in development challenges for the site regardless of the property's zoning designation. Most of the property is already zoned R4, so the permitted uses on the property under the proposed zoning will not change substantially compared to today's zoning designations. So this issue can be satisfied. Issue number three, the adequacy of public facilities such as transportation, utilities, and other required public services to serve the proposed use. As mentioned in the prior issue, since the site is located near the intersection of the Wilmington Pike and Woodman Drive intersection, access to the site will remain a challenge. A right-in, right-out access point for the site was designed and approved by the Kettering Engineering Department last year, and that was included, it's on the screen now, was also included as a part of your packet as Attachment F, which is helpful for illustrating how the site can be accessed in the, by vehicular traffic in the future. That being said, the requested zoning would not result, would not result in heavier traffic uses being permitted on the site when compared to the existing zoning. So this issue is satisfied as well. Issue four, the effect of the rezoning on surrounding uses. The requested rezoning would not deprive the adjacent single, single unit residential properties of their understandable expectation of a transitional buffer between their properties and the adjacent B Business zoning districts to the north and east. The R4 District and the uses permitted within the said district are frequently employed as a buffer between higher intensity uses such as offices and businesses. So this issue is satisfied. Finally, issue five, the effect of the proposed amendment on the economic viability of the existing developed and vacant land within the city. The proposed rezoning imparts no tangible changes to the existing developed and vacant land within the city. Most of the subject property is already zoned R4, and this rezoning upholds the applicable comprehensive plan and land use studies applicable to the area, so this effect is satisfied. Or I'm sorry, this issue is satisfied. And finally, the last item, the Planning Commission shall consider, or I'm sorry, the Planning Commission shall not recommend the adoption of a proposed amendment unless it finds that the adoption of such an amendment is in the public interest and not solely for the interest of the applicant. And this requirement can also be satisfied because one of the city's long-term goals with the Wilmington Pike Corridor is to reduce the amount of commercially and office zoned property in the corridor and keep those areas, keep the areas that are zoned office and commercial, or office and business near the major intersection of East Dorothy and Wilmington and the intersection of East Stroop and Wilmington. This rezoning request stays in line with this goal and is not in the sole interest of the applicant. So we do have a recommendation, but before I get to that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have none.
I don't have any, though.
Of all the applications we've had regarding this property, I think this one makes the most sense, so hopefully something will come of this, assuming that this goes forward.
I agree. I mean, it meets the requirements. If you look there, it doesn't, doesn't change a lot of zoning ultimately, and if they can find a way to develop it, then I agree.
Yeah, it's taken us 10 years, I think, to get to this point?
Yeah, actually, when I was going through the meeting minutes, when I was an intern in 2013, I believe this item was, this property had a rezoning that was continued on the agenda when I was the acting secretary. In 2013. I remember that.
So we've come full circle. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the commission at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we will ask now for staff recommendations.
Thank you, Chairman. Did we open the public hearing?
Well, I said we, at the very beginning, this is a public hearing.
Oh, okay, okay.
I did.
Thank you. So thank you, Chairman. The staff recommendation is that based upon the evidence presented in the analysis and findings made within the staff report, staff recommends that the request for approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone the subject property from R1, BP, and R4 to R4 Residential be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holmesy. I'd like to have a motion now to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Gah, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes. Mrs. Fisher, I believe you have a motion.
I do have the motion. I have a motion, PC-23-014, 4225 and 4235 Wilmington, rezoning from R1, R4, and Business Park to R4 Residential. Whereas an application has been received from Ronald J. Salata, 4481 Lots Road, Kettering, Ohio, 45429, requesting approval of a rezoning from the R1, BP, and R4 districts to R4 residential of the properties addressed 4225 and 4235 Wilmington Pike, Dayton, Ohio, 45440. And whereas the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a public hearing on July 17th, 2023, and whereas this request constitutes approval of a rezoning from the R1, BP, and R4 districts to R4 residential. And whereas the Planning Commission adopts the findings of fact... And whereas the planning commission adopts the findings of fact presented by staff in their report, which is incorporated into this motion, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a rezoning from R1, BP, and R4 districts to R4 residential, as shown on page two of attachment B, existing and proposed zoning, be recommended to City Council for approval. End of motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher and Mr. Rathman. It's been moved in seconded to approve this motion. Mrs. Goll, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Woski?
Yes. Motion has been approved. The last item on the agenda, I should say, the fourth item on the agenda, is a request for consolidation and replat of the lots at 1717 and 1725 Woodman Drive in Woodman Commerce Park, planning case number 23-015. And again, we'll begin with staff's presentation with Mr. Holmesy.
Thanks again, Chairman. This is a fairly straightforward record plan or lot consolidation for the properties at 1717 and 1725 Woodman Drive. The properties contain the Valley Thrift store, along with the parking lot that was constructed to the south. And most of what this record plan does is it takes four existing lots, kind of outlined in red there, and consolidates them into a single parcel containing just under four In addition to the lot consolidation, there are some changes proposed to some easements for a water line, and the engineer's been working with the county on finalizing these changes. Before the building addition, that was built on the north side of the Valley Thrift store was constructed, a water line kind of located right here within a, within an easement had to be relocated to the northern side of the site. So as a part of this, they want to vacate that old easement and then dedicate a new easement where the water line is located today. And they'll need to work with Montgomery County Environmental Services on making sure that that water line easement meets their, the county's requirement. That's why one of the recommended conditions of staff involves adding a signature block for County Environmental Services and having them sign the document before the planning commission signs it. There's a few other minor comments that staff included in their review, and these were forwarded to the applicant, and they contacted me Fri- Friday afternoon last week to let me know that they're okay with all the comments, because none are very major. First, we want them to label the new lot as Lot Number One. Also, if you look at the legend on the record plan, particularly as it relates to the easement dedication for the new water line location, and then the easement vacation, it says that, something to the effect of easement to be vacated by this plat in future ordinance, but our council does not need to pass an ordinance to vacate a water line easement that was dedicated to the county. So they can modify the text there. Same with the dedication of the new easement. It says it'll be dedicated by this plat and future ordinance. Our city council does not need to pass an ordinance to dedicate that easement. It can be dedicated as part of this plat. And then finally, we wanted them to add that signature block for Montgomery County Environmental Services, and this is just an example from a prior plat before the planning commission provides their signatures. So as a part of our review, we reviewed the record plan based on the zoning standards. All of the entire area involved in this record plan is zoned B business. From a zoning perspective, there are no minimum lot sizes, there are no minimum lot frontages, so there's not going to be a modification to the lot lines in a way that create any non-conformities. When it comes to the subdivision standards, we, attachment C, included a checklist of the requirements applicable to final plats. I already went over the easement recommendations, so the plat as submitted meets all the requirements except those for easements, because we want them to modify a few of the legend to be consistent with our requirements. And then the requirement to label the lot is Lot Number One. So we had to recommend a few conditions there. Other than those two pretty minor items, this record plan complies with the requirements of the zoning code and our subdivision regulations. So we do have a recommendation, but before I get to that, I'll ask, ask if there's any questions.
Does anyone have a question?
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Holmesy?
I have none.
No.
No questions? And I take it there is no one here from the applicant?
No.
To address us? So let's go to, and this is not a public hearing, but the commission is interested in hearing from anyone who may have a comment to make on this. So if anyone in the audience does wish to address us on this matter, please come forward to the podium. Seeing none, let's progress to staff recommendations.
Thank you, Chairman. So the staff recommendation, and I do have one minor word to modify, but I'll, in bullet point number three, so the staff recommendation is that the planning commission motion to approve the record plan, case number PC-23-015, with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of planning commission signatures. Number one, the signature block for Montgomery County Environmental Services, MCES, be added to the record plan and signed by a rep, by a representative of MCES. Number two, the lot be labeled as Lot One. And number three, strike the word generally, that's just a confusing term that doesn't need to be in there, but that the applicant agrees to comply with any changes recommended by the Kettering Engineering Department and the applicable utility reviewers. And that's it.
Thank, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Holmesy. And no other conditions? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. So with those conditions, I believe Mr. Rathman has a motion.
I do, Mr. Chair. I have a motion for the Woodman Commerce Park, PC-23-015. It is a replat. Whereas an application has been received from Donald Hemmer and Timothy Lynch of Hemmer DeFrank Wessels, PLLC, agent for the owner of 1717 and 1725 Woodman Drive, Kettering, Ohio, 45420, requesting approval of a replat of 1717 and 1725 Woodman Drive. This replat would take four existing lots and consolidate them into one lot containing 3.9535 acres. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lot. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a final record plan for the Woodman Commerce Park Record Plan be approved with the following conditions, which must be met prior to the provision of planning commission signatures. Number one, a signature block for Montgomery County Environmental Services, MCES, be added to the record plan and signed by a representative of MCES. Number two, the lot be labeled as Lot One. And number three, the applicant agrees to comply with any changes recommended by the Kettering Engineering Department and the applicable utility reviewers. This concludes my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rathman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Goll, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rathman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Urbis?
Yes.
Mr. Woski?
Yes. The motion is passed. The last item on tonight's agenda is audience participation. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the commission on items not on the agenda is invited to come to the podium. And seeing none, we'll move on to other business, signing of plats.
We do not have any.
We have no plats to sign, communications, and reports.
Another major, I just, a quick update, the public hearing for the rezoning of 2119 East Dorothy went to City Council at their last meeting. So the, assuming it follows the usual schedule, it should go for a second reading, I believe, on August 8th, or, no, the second Tuesday in August, which I think is the 8th. And then 15 days later, it'll be effective, so.
I think it's August 7th.
I think the 7th is Monday.
Is it?
So it's Tuesday, I believe so. But that's the, that was before the planning commission, I think, at the June 5th meeting. So that's proceeding. Other than that, I don't have any other updates.
Okay. And finally, planning commission comments. Any comments?
I don't have anything.
None?
None? Comments? Mr. Urbis?
Thank you for a very quick first meeting.
[laughing] Oh, we could stretch this out. All right. With that, and you're quite right, Mr. Holmesy, Monday, August 7th is a Monday, Tuesday, when the council meets, is August 8th. So our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, August 7th, at 7:00 p.m. The meeting is adjourned, and the time is, let me get my watch out, actually, my, I turned my, I turned my phone off. So the time is 7:43 p.m. Eastern Time.